Good morning, we now call this council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone at this time, if you'd be so kind, just place it on silent, mute, or off. Be greatly appreciated. At this time, we'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly a minister, laws enacted in judgment decree, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen. Thank thee for the life of United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Here.
Morgan?
Present.
Wes?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. I do apologize if there is anyone that would like to address Mayor and Council. We ask that you sign in at the sign-in sheet. At this time, we're accepting requests for agenda items only. So if you have a comment, statement, question on agenda items only at this time. Hearing or seeing none? Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Leolia Jackson, three fourteen East Twenty First Street, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. Number two, David McNear, four West A Street, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. Number three, Josette Richardson, ten thirty eight Butler Street, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. And number four, Frederick Ruger, eight thirty McDowell Avenue, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all other required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the three hundred block of East Twenty First Street and a unit block of West, excuse me, of West A Street and the one thousand block of Butler Street and in the eight hundred block of McDowell Avenue in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby rescind the resolution number one seventy six dash twenty twenty-two, which was passed by Chester City Council on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two for the advertisement of the Associate Project Manager position.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Janelle Johnson to the position of Permit Service Manager, License and Inspection Department, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, for thirty-seven point five hours per week with all benefits applicable. Said individual has successfully completed the sixty day benefit eligibility period. Further, said employee was appointed with a ninety day probationary period and will remain as such until the period is completed.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Serise Dixon to the part-time position of Associate Project Manager, Mayor's Office, Department of Public Affairs, not to exceed twenty hours per week with no benefits effective November first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Stand.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Livia Smith as a member of the Chester Water Authority Board for a five-year term commencing at the expiration of her current term.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Patricia Lewis West as a member of the Chester Water Authority Board for a five-year term commencing at the expiration of her current term.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint John Shelton as a member of the Chester Water Authority Board for a five-year term to fill the expired term of Suzie Kirkland.
So moved.
Second.
That's not correct. Um.
She never was on the board.
Suzie Kirkland was never on the board. So it's to reinstate, reinstate the term of Mr. Shelton.
So we do this again, um.
With corrections.
Okay, I move that we pass read. The resolution to reinstate Mr. John Shelton, um, with all corrections.
All right, second. Second, I want to know the correction.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept the award of the Delco Greenways Round Two Connect Trail Projects in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for improvements related to the Crozier Park through Chester Creek Trail. Further, that it does hereby transfer the grant management responsibilities to the Chester Economic Development Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby supersede resolution numbers one forty-eight through twenty twenty-two and one forty-nine. Let me go back to read that because it's not through. That it does hereby supersede resolution numbers one forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two and one forty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, approved by Chester City Council on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. That it does hereby authorize a vehicle fleet purchase of twenty new vehicles, including upfitting and outfitting expenses from Whitmore Auto Group Incorporated, one zero zero one East Main Street, Mount Joy, Pennsylvania, one seven five five two, for the Chester Police Department, the Chester Fire Department, and the Department of Public Works, purchased through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, known as Co-Stars, for the following vehicles in the stated amounts, which are to go to the listed departments. The Police Department will get nine new twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, paid by asset forfeiture. The Police Department will also receive seven new twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe plus outfitting charge for existing K nine vehicle in the current fleet in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. That's paid by American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. The Fire Department will get two new twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents, which is paid by American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA. And then the Public Works Department will receive two new twenty twenty-two Ford F five-fifties in the amount of two hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, paid by the Amer- American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA, totaling one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, three dollars and forty-three cents. Further, that the solicitors office shall review and approve the purchase order and or contract.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Yarnell Land LLC wishes to purchase and redevelop certain real properties located between Flower Street and Tillman Street and between Route two ninety-one and Delaware Avenue, as shown on the attached Exhibit A, to accommodate stadium parking needed to do the development of a new sportsplex. And whereas the Board of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester has approved the redevelopment authority entering into a redevelopment agreement conditioned upon approval of the agreement by the City of Chester, by the City Council of the City of Chester. And whereas the subject properties listed in Exhibit A are located in a redevelopment area in the City of Chester and as such, the sale, lease, or transfer of such property is subject to approval by Chester City Council under the Urban Redevelopment Law at thirty-five PS Section seventeen oh nine K. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it approves the redevelopment agreement between the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester and Yarnell Land LLC for the redevelopment of the properties listed on the attachment marked as Exhibit A.
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list for the period of November seventh, twenty twenty-two through November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, attached hereto and made up part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Once again, we want to remind, uh, residents, if you'd like to speak, uh, we asked you to sign in the sign-in sheet, uh, prior to doing so. Uh, we want to address Mayor and Council, who's located on the podium to my left. Um, COVID update, Mrs. Carter?
Good morning, um, Mayor and Council, as well as residents, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Um, COVID update, the Pennsylvania Department of Health reported thirty-two positive COVID-nineteen cases in Chester since the last council meeting on November the ninth. Research experts believe a number of positive cases is unaccounted, given the common use of at-home tests. Delaware County is currently experiencing a medium level of COVID-nineteen transmission. According to the CDC, many may choose to mask at any time. Those at high risk for severe illness, those with symptoms of positive test or exposure to someone with COVID-nineteen should continue to wearing a mask. The CDC has also reported twelve cases of monkeypox in the state of Pennsylvania since the last council meeting. COVID-nineteen vaccinations and boosters will be available since the last, I'm sorry, will be available on December fifth and December nineteenth from eleven to five PM at the Delaware County Health Center, located at one five one West Fifth Street. Walk-ins are offered, but you are encouraged to schedule an appointment by calling four eight four two seven six two one zero zero. You can also always go to the vaccine dot gov for the most up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. On November seventeenth, Chester High School partnered with the Health Department to host a Thanksgiving grandparents luncheon, and it was a success. The Foundation of Delaware County is partnering with Baby One. Project Partners will be showing a screening of the after shot. The event will be held in person at Whitener University's Alumni Auditorium. If you would like more information on how to register for the event, please call two six seven four five three six nine seven six. Lastly, if anyone needs COVID-nineteen test kits, they are available on the table downstairs. Also, I'd like to say that December first is HIV, uh, Worldwide HIV Day, and the CDC has a very, uh, very, uh, uh, concern, daring concern about HIV because the rates are going extremely high, especially in women. So I would encourage anyone that would need to have or get information about how you can get tested for HIV, please contact my office. And thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
And God bless you all.
Madam Clerk, have a special guest, a special, number special guest.
Congratulations, Coach Ladante L. Bell. Whereas for the last twenty years, Ladante has dedicated his life to working with youth. Whereas Ladante's passion to help troubled youth caused him to transition away from rehabilitating troubled youth to educating them. Whereas Ladante became a behavioral health counselor for Crozier Health, the New Pathways Program, where he served Chester Upland School District students. Whereas in twenty sixteen, Ladante became a physical education teacher within the Chester Upland School District. Whereas Ladante currently serves as the Athletic Director and Head Coach of the Chester High School Football Team. Whereas Coach Ladante Bell was selected as the Philadelphia Eagles nominee for the twenty twenty-one Don Shula NFL High School Coach of the Year Award. He also led the Chester High School Football Team to win the twenty twenty-two Dell Bell Championship for the first time in twenty-five years. Let me repeat that. He also led the Chester High School Football Team to win twenty twenty-two Dell Bell Championship for the first time in twenty-five years. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the council members of the City of Chester do hereby celebrate and thank Coach Ladante L. Bell of his dedication, inconsistent hard work for the youth and the families in the City of Chester, presented this twenty-third day of November, twenty twenty-two.
Before, before we do the people's chat, just, just, just real quick, um, on behalf of myself and council, Coach Bell, um, you are more than just, um, a coach. I've watched you personally down through the years during your time here in Chester. And I consider you a transfer. You have transformed the lives of these young boys into young men. And not just any old kind of young man, but a godman. And we appreciate the time and effort and energy that you've put into them. And you've sown and planted seeds into their lives that they will never, ever, ever regret. They consider, every day, every day, I drop my granddaddy off this year. And I drop my grandson off, and I said, and I always tell them, say, be the best. And they respond by saying, because we are the best. You have taught those young men to be the best, that they are the best. And we appreciate the commitment to the City of Chester, to these young people, and to Chester Upland School District. And we appreciate your, your commitment to our cheerleaders, our, our young ladies and fellows. I believe the work that you've done with those young men had provided a better respect for these young ladies by where those young men, because they follow your walk. So thank you, on behalf of myself and the council, thank you. And thank you, bro, continuing our legacy and making us a city of change. Now, this, this is a pretty good team. But it goes to someone with a pretty big heart, class two, and, uh, a young. And we just, we don't just give these out really young. We give these out to persons who honestly and truthfully deserve and possess of all the work and effort you put in to our young people, to our community, and commitment in the name of it. And so this says, he of the city presented to Coach Ladante Bell for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to the youth and their families in the City of Chester. It is not something that remains. And I am a proud citizen of the City of Chester. And gratitude. I'm gonna give you the key. You gotta, you gotta go home.
So I just wanna say thank you, um, first to Mayor Kirkland and Council. Um, thank you for this acknowledgement, um, truly. Um, I just thank God for everything, especially on, you know, in this season, it's a season of things. Um, but thank you to my beautiful wife, who's been my backbone for the last seven years. My daughter, uh, who's put up with me, um, you know, as a coach. Uh, my mom and my brother who are here from DC. Um, I'm truly, you know, truly thankful, uh, for this opportunity. So, uh, even to, um, you know, our football program, who may not be watching at this time, but hopefully they'll see this, that, um, without them, there is no me. Um, and I always said that to them, you know, without the player, there is no coach. So, you know, truly, um, I appreciate this opportunity uh, on behalf of our football program. Um, I just say thank you. Thank you to all who are here today. Thank you, Mom, thank you, Marcus. Thank you, uh, my wife, Markeisha, thank you, Lenaya. Thank you to our beautiful cheerleading program, um, who've come out to support. I really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Now, for some, for some strange reason, I thought the cheerleaders might have had a special cheerleading. Next week? Next week. Look, look. Yeah. Come on.
Did that miss? Oh yeah, I get to listen. Oh, you got it? Handset. I mean, real fast, Mayor, I won't. I just wanna make a comment as well. Um, I think Coach Bell know how much I love him and how much he's done for, uh, the culture of the student athletes, uh, not just football, but again, he's the, the AD with this, uh, the Chester Upland School District. So when it comes to the cheerleaders, soccer, basketball, football, um, he has been able to put his fingerprint on everything within the, the Chester Upland School District, and it has really had a domino effect. So definitely, like the mayor said, we all appreciate the work that you've done, uh, continue to do. Um, and you just see, Isaiah just pulled up, uh, behind him. So one of our, uh, bright, young, talented, uh, individuals, student athletes, uh, attended Lincoln University and just, uh, I just seen something today that he's rated as one of the top underclassmen in, in, uh, in HBCU and the college. So it's a good time, bro, keep on your thing. But again, that's a lot of that work now, we started from, from his upbringing, uh, Isaiah Freeman, but, uh, but also with the work that Coach Bell has been putting in over the years. So, so thank you, continue to do what you do, and shout out to your coaching staff as well for all the work that they put in with those guys as well, so.
Well, I'm, I'm very excited and, uh, very grateful for the, uh, pouring in that you have done, um, for our students at Chester High School. And, um, you're a godly man. I was very impressed with what I heard about you in terms of prayer and encouragement from a spiritual presence.
Bless you, bless you.
Um, I'm very appreciative of what you've done here. I'm also appreciative of your wife, because behind every good man.
Why are you looking at me when you say?
Well, thank you, bro, thank you all, your family, all of you for your contributions to our children here.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, you have any?
Just like they say, thank you for doing a wonderful job, and thank you for taking care of our children, because our children need you. Here in the City of Chester, our children come first. Thank you.
And next, we just gotta solidify a homecoming week, so that everybody know when the weekend is for homecoming, so they can all plan ahead of time, so we gotta talk about that.
The, the only, the only downside of this is, for me, and I think will be for the city, a slight downside.
a slight downside, is the fact that you are doing such a successful and, and amazing job with our young people. That some professional team is gonna come and grab you from Chester and break our hearts, but at the same time, make us proud. That's prophetic. Just remember I said that, so when I need some free ticket. Thank you, Coach, thank you lovely wife and family, and cheerleaders. Um, you know, you young ladies, y'all bring that energy. Y'all bring that energy, and, and, and without your energy, I, I, I can only imagine, it's, it's like having church without a choir or any musicians. Y'all bring that energy, and they can't do nothing but play hard and be successful with that energy that you, that you bring. And young man, you keep representing, you keep on representing, brother. With that. We got you, Mrs. Salim. No, no, not yet, not yet, we got you, we know you. Commissioner?
Good morning, I just wanted to make a quick announcement for the fire department. Uh, we will be bringing Santa Claus to Chester, um, on December 10th, starting at about 11 o'clock in the morning. Uh, we're gonna start at, uh, the Sun Village Park, and we're gonna go right down 9th Street all the way to Keystone Road. So, we're gonna make the, uh, the entire city tour, so get ready, Coach, for your, uh, parade, you know, just practicing. So, uh, and, uh, on behalf of the fire department, I wanna congratulate you on a great job, and I, I know Commissioner Gretzky wants to say the same, so, we're behind you, anything you need, and I'll thank you again. Santa Claus, December 10th, 11 o'clock, firefighters will be handing out candy, and if we get bad weather, it'll be the following Saturday.
Thank you, Commissioner. For those of you who don't believe in Santa Claus, stay home. I believe in Santa Claus. Santa Claus is my scapegoat. If I can't get it or afford it, I blame it on Santa Claus. Ms. Smith?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I just want a clarification on something that you did in the resolution. Um, number two, you said you rescinded the resolution that dealt with Associate Project Manager. But then in number four, you're, you're appointed Associate Project Manager. Can you just clarify that, maybe I didn't hear that, was that a resolution? Seven, 176, was that the Assistant Associate Project Manager? Did I hear that correctly?
Um, Sylister?
One wants to commit.
No, the one above it, the resolution.
176.
No, um.
Was there a change in the individual? Why did we rescind it?
There are.
What?
Um. Thank you, Mr.?
It's the light here. Apparently it had something to do with the advertisement of the position, but we already had someone put back position, so we rescind it.
Okay, so that was a resolution to advertise, but you did not advertise for that position, 'cause you already.
Correct.
Fill that position.
Had someone to fill that.
So that was in-house, or it didn't, didn't go out to the public to, 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 uh?
No, no.
It did not go out to the public, so it was internal.
In-house, in-house hire.
Okay, so you had a person that was full-time, and now they're gonna be a part-time employee?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so, let me just be clear. So, that person retired from the city to come back to do a part-time position? Is that what I'm clear on?
That's my understanding.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mrs. Salim?
Good morning.
Good morning, Sylister.
Yes, uh, my name is Amin Abdul, Salim Ali of 240 Patterson Street in Chester here. It's good seeing all you, uh, Mayor, Council, and you all. I'd just like to make brief comment, uh, brief comment, very brief comment. This is a good day, certainly it is, you know, once we see what it is, you know? And that's the idea here, is to see what it is. Someone says victory, someone's saying seeing is victory. And many of us, our eyes are not open yet to see, uh, as our Lord bringing us to see victory. So, that's something out in front of us. Uh, with, uh, I'd like to offer a bit of alignment. Alignment is very important for us, Mayor, so, it's good seeing you, Mayor.
It's good seeing you, sir.
Uh, and also, I'd like to, with that point, uh, stay with it, you know? You've gotta pass the test to be the best, if you will. So, we stay with it, we don't fall away at all, we, we stay right with it. But, but let me get right back to my point here, is, uh, alignment. When, when things fall out of alignment, God says, hey, man, messenger raise one up, uh, and to bring it back to alignment. And religion means alignment, nothing outside of religion, nothing, nothing that can go to our Lord, except religion, proper religion. We know artificial religion, but that's not what I'm talking about here. But it is worth mentioning, because we have a lot of artificial concepts that is stagnating us, bringing us back, holding us back. And we are clearing these up, we are moving now, we are moving now. So, with the alignment, through religion, we get back to young man. Uh, he said, oh, this what, certainly, Tawheed, oneness of Allah, of God, oneness of God. And everyone is conscious of their Lord in the good way, in the good way, the correct way, the real way. That's what he's meant. So, bottom line is, this is what we wanna do, this is what we must. Our children, if you will, sir, and our, and this, turn your children the way that you would have them to go in the way, that's saying quite a bit, quite a bit. We know that our children come out of their mother womb, if you will. And if you will, for this Muslim, or one total submission to your Lord. Nothing, total submission, Muslim. What takes them off, if you will, sir? Faithful Christian youth, so others, is, is parents or their society. But let's stay, keep them, uh, that, meaning God say what they say, if you will, sir. Turn your children, they belong to the Lord, and to your Lord you shall return, bottom line. So, we turn them, we don't call ourselves grabbing them by the head and carrying them, that will not work, turn them, 'cause they still have the strength and energy of being, coming freshly, uh, from their, their mother womb, on the straight path that can lead us out of here, out of here, out of here. Insha Allah, God's will, and I pray that there was something that we can, and I pray I was not too long, sir. But thank you very much, sir.
It's always a pleasure, Mrs. Salim. Artificial concepts that hold us back, I like that.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Councilwoman?
Your trash pickup for this week is, um, is different because of the holiday. Monday's trash will be picked up on Monday, Tuesday's trash on Tuesday, and then, um, Thursday's trash will be picked up on Wednesday, and then you have Friday's trash, I believe, yeah, no recycling, no recycling this week. So, just your regular trash, we just.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Williams?
Happy holiday.
Thank you, Councilwoman?
I don't have anything, happy holidays, eat up.
So, um, I do, um, Coach, wh- where are you guys leaving, going after this? Getting prepared for tomorrow. So, usually, we will do something nice, and... So, where you guys going for lunch? Um, do me a favor, and I'll, but you had to bring my card back. Do something nice, uh, we have Uno's, take your squad to, to lunch, alright? No problem, no problem. Oh, you do have something downstairs? Thank you. I, I, I think we have. Oh, well, alright. Okay. You keep your card in your, keep my card in my pocket. Okay, beauty room? Surprise, 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 alright, I keep my card in my pocket, yeah. I just wanna say, um, on, um, on the, November the 29th, at 8 o'clock, at Wyden University, which Latham Hall, we will, uh, present, be doing the State of the City address. Uh, it will be presented by myself, and we'll take questions from residents and business persons. If, uh, you're able to be there, you're more than welcome to come. That's, uh, November, November the 29th at 8:00 AM. Just, mm-hmm, okay, yeah. Just wanna say, um, to all of you, uh, thank you for, I mean, the year's not over yet, but have a safe and blessed Thanksgiving. Love on one another, share with one another. Don't be too critical with each other. There was a young man, um, who, who just lost his life. These, these, um, holidays can be kinda rough. Young man who was one of our lifeguards here, coming home from college to be with his family, uh, was killed in a car accident just a few days ago, and was funeralized yesterday. Life is too short, I don't care if you're 99 or nine, life is too short to, uh, to harbor ill will and have mean spirits. So, just love on one another, and have a great Thanksgiving. With that said, let's go downstairs.